I think we'll get started. We have somewhat of a busy evening. We are mandated by our town resolution that was passed a couple of years ago to present a budget form. We do this every year. This is our fifth year doing it since this board has been in place. And what I like to do is just kind of take the residents through kind of a quick overview of the budget and where we're going to get a sense of some of the challenges the board is looking at this year. And then we do it in a multi-year budget. It's just a one-year document for us. We look over multiple years, so we'll do some trending and some graphs here tonight to give you an idea of where we've been and where we're going. As you probably read, for those of you who can get the Gazette, there's some challenges this year, as there are every year. That's just the nature of the budget, particularly municipal finances. We have a very tight tax cap this year, and we have some costs that we don't necessarily have a lot of control of that continue to increase. And two of those coming together, along with some revenue flatlining on us this year, is causing for a pretty tight budget for 2015. That's a quick overview, but that's not to say the town has not done a good job of managing its funds and we're in a pretty strong financial position. It's just operationally, we're going to see some challenges that we have ahead of us for 2015. So I'll jump right into it. Typically, every year, it's my fifth year, and I typically mess up the whole button thing, so I'm going to try this year. It's down. The air down now. So far, we're off to a good start. So when we talk about the town budget, we're actually talking about budgets, particularly when you have a village within your town and you have a variety of budgets. You have the Town General Fund. We call that the A Fund or the O1 Fund. And that fund, that budget is about almost $4 million, and that is the townwide fund. So that impacts the village of Scotia residents as well as the town of Glenville residents. What we call the B Fund or the O2 is almost $5 million, and that represents really any resident or affects any resident outside the village of Scotia because Scotia may have those services they're already providing. We don't double bill. We don't double provide services. And the next slide will kind of give you an example of each of those. The Highway Fund, or we call the D Fund or the O4, is about $3.5 million. And then we have a variety of sewer districts, water districts. All comprise the sewer and water funds at 1.5 and 2.6 respectively. And then a whole variety of special districts, drainage, lighting, Fire District 4, for example. And then our total budget is about $17 million. When we talk about the budget, we usually refer only to the three main funds, 1, 2, and 4. A, B, and D are the only ones because those are the ones that affect nearly every resident somewhere or other. The special districts do not. If you don't have lighting on your street, if you're in a drainage district, they don't affect you. So those are separate. Each one of those funds, however, impact the tax cap. So it's not just the taxes you necessarily are paying that impacts the tax cap. It's the taxes in its totality of all the districts put together that impact the tax cap. And just to give you an example, the O1 Fund or the A Fund would include things like the town board, the town justices, the clerk, the comptroller, assessor, our senior services, parks, anything that we provide to the village and the village resident receives the services. Things like police, where they have their own police force, that's in the town outside village, the planning department, code enforcement, engineering, are just some examples of how that's comprised. And just real quick, just so everyone knows how the process flows, tonight is our community forum on the budget. I will submit my budget to the board by 9:30 or 14:00. The town board will then have the budget reviewed as a group, will review it, submit any potential changes, modifications. The preliminary is due October 15th, and then we'll have a public hearing on 11:05, and then we'll enact the final budget on 11:20. So from the process which starts actually in July, when I start talking with the partner heads, Jason and I, about budgeting and getting a budget together, they submit their budget to be in the board. I put together the tentative, and then we go from there on this schedule. Over the years, we've had some management principles when it comes to budgeting. We just don't kind of throw offs a lot of these, that hey, we want to be at 2%, we want to be at 3%. We want to try to accomplish something with the budget other than just staying on the tax cap. But first and foremost is the management principle of live within our means. We don't want to go out and continue to bond or to create debt in order to evade the tax cap. That seems to be a popular way that law and justice policy is growing lately, where what we're doing, instead of making capital investments with cash because it impacts your tax cap, go bond it, and then they won't have that cost to worry about for, they can spread it out 20 years, 10 years, whatever. And it lowers the impact on the tax cap that year. We have, you'll see, we have lowered our debt over the years. When we get to that slide, we'll talk about that a little bit more. We also want to protect services while streamlining government. This has been kind of a bone of contention for some people who talk about, well, how do you reduce some of your staffing or how do you reduce some of what the resources you have and still continue to provide the same services you always have? This board has done a very good job at doing just that. We want to ensure that you continue to receive the same services you always have as we continue to fight against increasing costs and declining revenues. Services are a principle. And that kind of flows into avoiding gimmicks. Other municipalities, you've read about them, are our sister communities. They have decided to increase revenue by imposing new tax, new fees, new fees on services they always provided as part of the general fund. The fee does not hit the tax cap. The board can create a fee, like they have in the electorities called the garbage fee or the bulk pickup fee. And when you look at a $50 fee, that tax, if that was a tax increase, that's somewhere about 12 to 15% tax increase. If the residents in those communities are facing that, that is not happening in my building. It won't happen in this budget either. No new fees to try to evade the tax cap while delivering the same services. And then lastly is reduce the fund balance. We've talked about this before. The fund balance in a municipal budget is like a savings account. And so you put money away for the rainy day or for capital improvements. What's happened in this town unfortunately over the years prior to this administration is that the town got very dependent on that fund balance to pay for operational expenses. That's like paying for your mortgage out of your savings account. And at some point, your savings account's going to run dry, and you have to go pay your mortgage. That's what this board's trying to avoid by reducing our dependency on that savings account. So our results so far, 2013, we recorded surpluses in three of our funds, the general, Town General, the outside, so the A and the B, and then the sewer fund. We had surpluses in 2013, meaning revenues came in higher than expected, expenses were lower than we thought. We have reduced the town workforce by 20% through attrition and/or shared services. This is a critical, I think, point, and we'll talk about it later as we get to that slide. But we've been able to reduce the benefit because when you look at the budget, the biggest issue that we have is personnel costs. It's not the employees' fault. It's not the board's fault. It's not the residents' fault. But the reality, the stark reality, is the only cost that is driving our increases is personnel cost. We have to manage those costs the best possible. If we do not manage those costs, we will not stay in the tax cap, and you'll see the taxes will be double-digit go forward. That's an important point. And we also have a pay-as-you-go philosophy, and as I talked about in the previous slide, we don't want new debt necessarily. We've lowered our debt load by $4 million since 2010. That helps us obviously stem through the tax cap. The next slide is going to show you a little bit about the fund balance. And that's our, basically, look at this, is our savings account, the amount of money we've used out of our savings account to pay for operational expenses. And if you look at it, '08 was a drop, and that's really an anomaly. So in '07, '06, '07, '08 was a drop for a couple of reasons. Number one, we had FEMA money sent to this town in response to an emergency. That FEMA money was put against the, instead of using the fund balance, they're using the FEMA money. Secondly, in '08, there was a 7% levy increase. That's a large increase because board has not gotten near 7% as a levy increase. So obviously, what happens if you use less savings, you have to increase the levy higher. And third, there's something called an intermunicipal transfer, where you can go to the water fund, you can go to the sewer fund, you can go to other funds, transfer money into your general fund to cover certain expenses. There was a large allocation of that in that year. So '08 is an anomaly, but generally speaking, the trend has gone from about $900,000 in '06 to about $1.4 million in 2010. That's a lot of money being allocated out of the savings account to pay for operational expenses. When this board came into, take the board over, 2011 is our first budget. First thing we did was begin to reduce that dependency. And as you can see, we made tremendous progress over the past five years or so, and we project that process of progress to continue. It's important. We've got to get to a point where we're not relying on our savings to pay for these operational expenses. This next slide really shows controlling personnel costs over the years. So if you look at 2008, our personnel cost was $5.2 million. This is wages only. It's not health or retirement, or retirement costs or anything else like that. This is just wages. It doesn't include overtime, includes part-time work, includes all the wages, comp time. We have really gone from 5.2 to 5.2. There are a few blips here and there, but as you can see, we have really controlled the non-benefit side of employee benefits. What's interesting about that is in 2008, we had 102 employees in this town. In 2014, we had 83. Of the 83, only 70 are part-time. You can see clearly the model that we had to shift to in order to keep that line flat, just in order to control those costs. So the way we deploy our employees have changed over time in order to try to keep this line under control. Remember, and we're going to talk about some, the health and the retirement fund, we don't have any control over. This is it. This is the only control we have to try to keep those costs flat. This slide shows you really the wages and benefits. Now, this does include health and retirement costs, and you can see those costs are much higher than 5.2. That's about another, so I would say, if you look at the 2008 number, you're paying about $2 million in benefit costs, health and retirement. In just seven years to 2014, you're now paying $3.5 million. That's a 40% increase in seven years in that line. It's extraordinary amount of new spending to try to absorb into the budget. That is obviously $1.5 million in costs over seven years. A lot of it's retirement. We did not have any costs in our retirement line prior to 2001. Since 2001, we have over $1.5 million in that line. We've had to absorb that. Again, without breaking a tax cap, without allocating money out of our savings account, operationally, we've had to absorb these. The other thing this chart tells, shows you, I think, clearly, when we say non-tax revenues, we mean non-property tax revenues. So our sales tax, our mortgage tax, and our franchise fees are our big revenue lines. They're flat. They're generally flat. We have some fluctuation here and there, but they're generally flat. Revenue is flat. So the only revenue line left is the property level. That's the only line we have left if all the other lines are down. So what's happening in the projection there, that widening gap between the wages and benefits and the non-property tax revenue, that's property tax increases. That's what it is. And that's going to be something that we have to guard against as we look at this budget going forward. I've gotten a lot of calls on the school tax bill lately, and I've gotten a few people who've talked about the fact that their January tax bill is a town tax. Just to be clear, and I wanted to put this graph in here so people understand it, for every dollar you pay in annual taxes, 10 cents of that is town taxed, including the highway development. 60, almost 67% of your tax bill is your school, your school tax, general school. Another 23% is your county property tax, and then 8.1 and 2.4 are county and highway respective. It's something to point out because it's something that people have to understand where the tax dollars go and where are the best that they can maybe put some of the resources and try to control some of the increases that are happening. We're doing what we can on our 10 cents, but there's 90 cents that we have to really start focusing on the school districts and county if we want to start controlling these taxes. So the challenges with the property tax cap include, it's not really a 2%, we've heard this over and over again, 2% cap. It's 2% are CPI, and then there's a former that can get you above 2%, but this year's CPI was so low at 1.56. It means that we have $135,000 in new spending that we can do without breaking the tax cap on a $17 million budget, by the way, just so we're clear on that. And we're going to talk, the next point is clear. Our health insurance costs are expected to grow by $125,000. Another increase this year of $125,000. And then our county election tax increase is going to be $25,000 increase or 7%. That's the bill the county passes on to the town to run elections. We don't run the elections. They run it. We pay the bill. That's how that relationship works. That has been increasing exponentially over the years. Those two things alone get us to our tax cap. Now, that's not talking about wage increases, and we have three contracts we have to settle yet, we haven't settled. That's not talking about capital improvements, not talking about the senior center needing a new parking lot because that's crumbling, it's not talking about investing in our parks because they're crumbling, it's not talking about buying new cars and trucks that haven't been bought in years or paving our streets. None of the things that a town is tasked to do and must do are even, we'll blow that tax cap. These two things alone get us to our tax cap. We have to mitigate against those increases. We can't just accept them and say we can't do anything about it. We can do something about it, and we've done that. We've changed the modeling of our employees. We've changed our jobs. We've changed the way we approach certain tasks. That's what we have to do to control that spending, and that's why I think it's been successful. When we talk about new development, and we're going to talk about the Target as an example, the pilots that the county hands out, again, the town has no role in the pilots. The pilots that the county hands out hurts the town in two ways. It takes property tax revenue out of the town and shifts it onto the residents. But the pilots also count against our tax cap. They're subtracted off of our tax cap. It's a bizarre thing in state law, but it hurts us. It lowers our tax cap. So we're now allowed to raise that levy as high as we could because our pilots are hurting us. So that's something in Stankey County that we need to change. Our challenges on the revenue side include a few things. So as I told you, our revenues are sales tax, mortgage tax, franchise fee, which is the cable bill, you get a little piece of the cable bill, and then of course, property tax. In this county, the sales tax has been a problem for municipalities. We have been stuck in a 14-year cycle now where we do not receive any new sales tax despite all the growth you see here, despite what's going on at Target and Lowe's and Walmart and anywhere else. We do not realize any of that growth. The county realizes the growth. They get to keep the sales tax, but we are locked into zero growth through 2020. Now, if you think back to those slides I showed you, where personnel costs are going like this, our sales tax is going like this. There's not a lot of places to go other than property tax to try to make up for that. Metroplex's sales tax revenue and franchise fees to the town have been flat and in somewhat a stale economy. We're not, I think people are leaving Time Warner. We're seeing smaller and smaller checks from Time Warner or reducing the bills. And that impacts us. The biggest thing that we're dealing with right now is the mortgage taxes down. We're at 10-year lows in the mortgage tax revenue. We have probably, we will finish this year about $150,000 to $170,000 short in that line. We project in 2015 that we're going to have to reduce it by maybe $200,000. That is significant revenue lost to the town, and it's just an economic reality. A lot of the refis are done. There's really not a lot of refis left. Houses aren't really, I know people have told me, oh, it seems like a lot of signs are up. There's not a lot of inventory on the market. They're not moving as they used to. So we're going to see a decrease in that revenue line. And as I mentioned, we don't capture the full benefits of our own economic growth because we don't get the sales tax. So speaking of sales tax, I want to show graphs that I thought was kind of interesting. It was easy to graph, but town expense versus sales tax revenue. So the blue line is your sales tax revenue from '08 to 2019, generally flat. The gap between the expense and the town sales tax revenue relies from $7.5 million, that's generally the levy, to about $11.5 million in 2019. So your levy, under this scenario, if we don't control these expenses, will grow from $7.5 to $11.5 in just these next five short years. That's significant, that's a significant cost shift to the residents off of the county, the county sales tax. So in 2008, we collected $2.67 million in sales tax. In 2019, we project $2.64. It's actually going to be less based on the agreement that was made. When you look at the red line, the expenses, it looks like it's growing fairly quickly. That's about a 3% to 3.5% growth rate, and all of it, all of it is essentially benefits, health and retirement. But if you take anything away from tonight, health and retirement, until we get control of those two lines, this line is not going down. We can't cut much more. We can't, we can't, you know, completely eliminate investing in the community and trucks and all the things we need to do. Health and retirement. Retirement's controlled by the state of New York. They shift the cost down to the municipalities. Health is contractual. We have to sit down and reach an agreement on how we can restructure fairly rich health benefits that have been given by the town over the years, and all towns really. Here's a really good, I think, example of where we are with the sales tax. So a typical Target store generates about $38 million in sales tax, our store right here. That would create $1 million in new local taxes. And the way their structure is now, $745,000, that million dollars goes to the county. Another $130,000 goes to the city. Another $87,000 goes to Metroplex. So between the county entities and the city, they get 97% of that new growth sitting right here in our backyard. We get $8,000 off of $1 million. By the way, the other towns get another $8,000 each too, so that's where, if the numbers don't add up, that's where they are. We virtually get no benefit from the program. Unfortunately, it's a point that we have to harp on because residents and employees, and I hear it from all, everybody, there's so much growth, why isn't that money going into the budget? It's because it's being taken by the county, the city, Metroplex before it ever gets to us. Now, some would say, well, why even bother doing it then? What's the benefit of all that? Well, you have a few benefits. I mean, you have benefits to the resident. You have convenience, right, of staying in town. You have jobs and freebies. Maybe they're not all of them are the highest-paying jobs or the greatest jobs for people. And this board firmly believes that economic development is the only path for us to travel right now. And it may not be a benefit today, and some of these pilots and some of these agreements we have in place may not be a benefit in the next five years, but at some point, we're going to benefit this time. Those pilots will expire. Bad policy will be fixed. These bad sales tax agreements will have to be fixed. It will take pressure from the residents, but they will be fixed someday, and then this town will realize the benefit of all that. And so some of the workforce challenges in particular, because we said 70% of our budget is employee-based, 25% of our town employees will be eligible to retire by 2015. We've lost eight employees this year to retire. We anticipate we may lose another seven to eight next year. That's a significant amount of turnover, around 73 people who saw those are part-timers. So we are in, as I've talked about during the whole transition from town administrator to a full-time supervisor, talked about the tremendous flux this town is in right now. It's quite unique to this town. I mean, I know a lot of municipalities are going through some sort of retirement, but to see that kind of retirement over a two-year, two- to three-year period, it's tremendous flux. That's a challenge to us, but it's an opportunity. It's an opportunity for us to look at, to do things differently. So when we start talking about positions differently than they've been looked at in the past, this is why. We can do it through attrition. We can do it through retirement. Nobody loses a job. Nobody's laid off, but we can make those changes incrementally and get to where we need to go. As I said, budget is not a one-year tool. It is a multi-year endeavor, and it gets us to a goal that we want to get to by making some of these tough decisions we're making right now. By all standards, the previous labor deals were very generous with the payouts. No way to talk around it, no way to avoid it. When someone retires in the town of Glenville, they bank their time, and they can leave with their sick leave payout, which right now is about $30,000 per employee. So do the math on the seven or eight that we're talking about, and that's just an average. You're looking at significant amount of money going out the door. We paid out this year, Jason, how much? 300,000? $300,000 in cash walked out the door through retirements this year. That's what we're managing against. So just to put numbers in your head, you start to think about it. $150,000 in new health insurance cost, another $25,000 in new election expenses, $300,000 in cash outs. Think about all that now when we talk about we're going to have to settle through contracts. If we give just a 1% raise to every employee in the town, just a 1% raise with benefits, when you think about it, that's almost $100,000 in new spending. There's no room in the cap for $1 in new spending. How, that's just a 1%. And I got to tell you, I don't know how many employees are willing to accept a 1% right now. I don't think we're close to that. You talk 3%, you're talking $300,000 in new spending in this town. All of that mitigated against $35,000 in a lot of new spending in the tax cap. Those are the challenges that we're facing. And so this year, we're looking at budgeting about $220,000 in new cash payouts for retirees. Additional challenges, I mentioned a couple of times, our three labor contracts have been expired. They have not been settled. We're working on it. We'd like to get it done, but it's a challenge for us, how are we going to fit into the spending. Healthcare costs are rising beyond the tax cap allowance. Our New York State retirement rates, although this year are not increasing because the stock market has had a couple of good years and it's tied to that, they are still at 30-year highs, highest we've seen. We're still talking about $1.5 million in our budget in retirement costs each year. Our outgoers are uncertain regarding the cost of the 911 dispatch center, which has gone to the county, who will be receiving some savings this year. We believe about $95,000 in savings. But we always knew we would capture those savings early. It's the outgoers I'm worried about. I don't know where it's going. When they took over the election role, the county took over election role, it's multiplied from, I think, when we had $45,000 to 400. It's in how many years? 10 years. We've gone from $45,000 to $300,000 in 10 years. I'm afraid something like that's going to happen because when we look at the agreements that were negotiated with the county dispatch workers, the pay raises are coming, not this year, not next year, but three years from now and four years from now, they're all going into what they call the water level. They're all going to the highest wage level. That's going to drive more cost down to the taxpayer. So we do have some savings this year, but I don't think that's going to be a long-term thing. And of course, the long-term investments in our capital, equipment, and facilities. This is a wonderful time. It's a beautiful time, but things are starting to look a little negative. Drive down some of the streets, they have not been paved two years. Tommy's been working, Tommy was here tonight, he's been working diligently on all the drainage issues in the town. They've not been addressed for years. We've been spending a lot of money on drainage before paved, which makes a lot of sense, but these are all things we have to do. We haven't bought trucks, this board has bought trucks, but prior to that, we haven't had trucks purchased. Police cars haven't been purchased over the years. Our facilities have not been invested in over the years. These are all things that we like to get to. One of the board's biggest projects we're still working on because we're trying to find funding for it is the town's Center of beautification. I've talked about it. Sidewalks are coming. We had to make an investment in that. $133,000 this year to get the state DOT to do the project. We did that. We did that. The county would not put any money into that project. Even though they get the benefit of the sales tax, the commercial board, we're paying to get this done. Lighting in the new town center, we're trying to do it without impacting the tax cap. It just can't happen operationally. So we're trying to find the money to make that happen. But to make the most basic investments in your community unfortunately puts us in a spot where we either have to break the tax cap, or you have to find the savings somewhere else. So we're at a point where there's not a lot more bad left on the ground. We've picked all the fruit, to use another analogy that we cannot particularly capture. So with that, I promised a half hour, just about a half hour, so I think it's a good time if anyone had any questions, comments for the board. Again, this is a good starting point, the budget will, my budget will come out at the end of the month, and then the board will work on it through October, and then we'll have our adopted budget in November. You can engage the board at any time in that process. You can still come to the public hearing, you can still come to talk for those four calls. But right now, if you want to have a public discussion, it's a great opportunity if you have any questions or comments. Nobody at all. Yes, ma'am?
I have three questions. I was just wondering, you talked about the retirement costs that are under state jurisdiction. Do... I know it's a state issue, like I said, but are you, would you be in favor of a defined contribution plan, which would make the cost more predictable?
Yes.
You would?
Personally, I would. I would. You know, I always come up with crazy ideas, people don't like it, but I said, "The state ought to give the municipality the right to elect in or out of the system." And everyone thought that was crazy, said that they had heard. But I really think the municipality... The whole issue with the tax cap and the cost that gets passed down to us without our control, the election expense, or retirement, or you name it, any of the mandates, I believe the municipality should have more control over this. We should choose, do you want our employees in, or do you want them to find the benefit?
Thank you. I was wondering if you perceive the budget being balanced, not any anticipated revenue, rather than actual revenue you've experienced over the past few years?
Yeah, I don't see any revenue. In fact, I see unfortunately with mortgage tax revenue dropping, we'll probably have to reduce that revenue line to 2015 by about 100. I mean, just roughly right now, $175,000. Roughly $50,000 because of 1% levy increase. So you're talking right there, 3.5%. That revenue equals a 300% levy increase if we don't find it anywhere else here. Cost savings or new revenue. Municipalities are very limited in terms of revenue, and we can't do a lot, other than tax. You know, some people are envious of their ability to tax. We don't want to do that, you know, nobody wants that. So aside from sales tax, mortgage tax, when somebody files their mortgage with the county clerk, revenue for cable, franchise fees, and property tax, we don't have any really means of trying to save any revenue.
That brings me to my last question. Was the county Glenville, were they part of the negotiations to get the Alibis put over here?
Were we part of the negotiations?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it was fairly... To be honest with you, they wanted to come, so it was a pretty easy negotiation. But we did help attract them here, and they're coming over here, where Teresa's was.
Yes.
When you ask that question, do you mean though on the tax generation side of that project?
Well, that's going to be my next question, just during those negotiations.
No. So the town is never really involved in negotiations on how pilots are structured. We sometimes get told how things are going. I will say, Ray has been, when I became supervisor, one of the things I noticed was the county was very fond of giving away mortgage tax exemptions. That is a huge line for the town. And I called Ray up, and one of our first conversations was, "You've got to stop giving away mortgage tax exemptions unless you talk to the town." So he instituted what he called the Ketsley Rule, and he doesn't give as much anymore. So we made progress there. But when the county wants to give a pilot, it gives a pilot over our objection now. We don't have any role in that.
And is that the same for why you were locked into the sales tax?
Yeah, so the sales tax formula is negotiated between the county and the city. And it's complex with state law. The city has always had the authority to collect sales tax, the town's never had that authority. So when they went to a county collection, the city had what they call standing. They can continue to collect their tax if they want, or they can go with the county and share it. In Saratoga, I believe, Saratoga Springs collects their own sales tax still to this day. And they control all that. The city of Schenectady decided to go with the county. That meant that those were the two principles that decide how this thing gets shared. We, like Thanksgiving dinner, are the children sitting over at the table, and we're just told, whatever those two negotiated, we live with. Now you can see why, on that slide, you saw how they received the line and shared the sales tax. We just get the promise. And we're stuck into that for the last seven years, that was the deal, and that was the new deal made. This past time that they negotiated, we weren't, we didn't know until the deal was done. We read in the paper. So we weren't invited to that negotiation.
Is there any way you can prevent that in the future, when we're more, maybe increasing our communication and relationship, which I don't know if that's possible, but...
Yeah, you know, relationships are important, and I think we have good relationships, like the other towns, because the other towns are the same old word. Bad policy has to be fixed, though. And it's bad policy in Duane's Town. And I hope someday. It's left out, Roderick's left out, Glenville, Duane'sburg, Princeton, the villages, Lansing, and Scotia. It's the city and the county.
See, and I think, I've said this to Chris, we need to start being a squeaky wheel on this. I think we should start reaching out to the other towns in the county and form a coalition, and go to the county and say, "This is not acceptable." And if it can't be fixed now, at least they're on notice at the time of the next negotiated sales tax agreement, it's got to be different. Because all this budget system that Chris went through is predicated, and it assumes that there is access to sales tax revenue growth. And right now, this system here is placing all pressure squarely on the real property tax base. And worse than that, it's putting all the pressure within that on the residential taxpayer. And it just is.
And that, we need to touch on this year, how the commercial base in town Glenville is smaller than it is in Roderick and Miskiuna, so we have a particular problem where we're feeling it, as Jim pointed out, on the residents. And that's why bringing these in, these businesses in, will help someday when those pilots go away. Some are five years, some are seven, some are 10. But when they go away, then we're going to start to see that spread. I'll be gone, these guys will probably be gone, you'll all be here, but hopefully, you'll see the benefit of that.
Chris, did you say on the sales tax issue that that expires in 2020?
Yeah. They just did the deal last year.
It's important to go to your county budget hearing, you know, write letters to your county legislators, because the other unique aspect about Schenectady County, I think we're probably one of three counties in New York State that still has a county legislature. If this were most counties in New York State, Chris would be sitting on a county board of supervisors that develops the county budget and negotiates a sales tax agreement as a supervisor from one of the towns in the county. I think Albany, Us and Franklin are the only remaining counties anymore with a county legislature. It's another layer of government, and it's just that much more removed, in my opinion.
Do we not have any representation on the county board?
You do.
What are they doing for?
Not as a township, we don't.
Well, there... Someone's holding up a zero sign back there, but they're going for us. But you do have legislators you vote for.
I feel sorry for you. I agree with you, which is that the same. I'm with Donald Roderick, and I'm just here to listen. And he's absolutely right. You have, I believe, four representative counties?
Six.
Four? No.
Four.
You're different, you have four. The next five, eight-year mark of elections, that should be your priority. And it should be that in my district. And you know, you should know your games for play.
And if you want to get more angry, go online sometime and download the county budget. Take a look at that monster sometime. That'll really, my blood boils.
And when you get your January tax bill, look at the county line compared to the town.
Your town taxes often look like they're very high, because we do the county service by collecting their tax.
Or they're the tax receiver, yeah.
Where they receive the tax. And so when you see your tax bill in January, and it looks high, please remember our dollar. 10 cents of a dollar is what we actually collect from the residents of the town. So there is, it's called state and federal mandates. That's the county portion of your tax bill. So you can see the discrepancy or the disparity in what the town actually collects for the services that we provide and where the rest of it goes. And, you know, a lot of us have mortgages, you may not, your bank pays it because it's escrowed, you may not pay attention, because it's really not a check you're writing. But if you take a look at it, you can, you will see that, you know, the town Glenville, for the services that we provide, really do not overtax. At least in my opinion. I mean, I don't like paying taxes, but for what we provide, I feel like we provide a fair service for a fair revenue.
Any questions, comments?
Why do we have no control over healthcare costs?
So the...